Welcome to our Utica Community Schools School Board Candidate Forum. I'm Wayne Emke, President of the Sterling Heights Regional Chamber of Commerce, and we're honored to present these interviews with the candidates for Utica Community Schools Board of Education in the November 4th election. We're hoping to give you a better insight into the candidates, their positions, and their plans for moving Michigan's second-largest school district forward. Ron Elbers, candidate for Utica Community Schools Board of Education. Thanks for being here. Nice to meet you.
Well, thank you. No problem. Glad, I wanted to talk to you, and there seems to be some problems in the board itself.
Okay.
And there's some questions, some choices are going to have to be made coming up.
Okay, and before we get to that, we'll get you a chance for that, just so we get, folks get a chance to know you a little bit better. Tell us where you live and tell us a little bit about your background.
I lived in Sterling Heights since 1972. And I have three children that have graduated from Stevenson High School. Went from all the way from kindergarten all the way up. In fact, I have a grandson now who is also attends Stevenson, and he's in the marching band. My wife, Elaine, and I, we've been married for 45 years. And, you know, I just, I like Sterling Heights. I have no intention of ever moving. But I've, I have run for office in the past where I thought there might have been some problems as far as in the county-wise, but it's seemed to have gotten things pretty well straightened out in the county. There's been a lot of changes, personnel, and...
The whole form of government, right?
Yes, and it's changed. It's gotten a lot better. But I'm looking now at the, at the school board. You know, it's, if you're operating in a red for about three years, you have a surplus. The surplus is going to be used up. And so now there's contracts are going to have to be renewed with the teacher.
Sure.
So there's going to be, have to be some hard choices. And, go ahead.
Okay, what, you know, professional or volunteer experience? What have you done that, what have you done in your life that says, wow, that would be a...
Yeah, I have lived there since 1972. And so if you want to go back, a few years back, I was a member of the Kiwanis at one time.
Okay.
Also a member of the J.C.s. When you get to a certain age, you have to get out of the J.C.s.
I wonder why.
I'm beyond that. I have, I have been the president of the Sterling Heights Parks and Recreation Boys Baseball.
Okay.
And I also manage two teams myself.
Another big job.
That's a big job. Well, it's a big job being president and managing two teams at the same time. You always have people calling you after the games are over, and you're talking about 10, 11, 12 o'clock in the evening complaining about the other manager.
Yeah, they're never calling with accolades, are they?
Yeah, and, you know, that was a high-paying job for me. But we've, I enjoy the state. I've also currently am the Vice President of the Motor City Aquarium Society.
Yeah.
And we promote breeding and caring of aquatic animals and plants. I've been a member of that society for about 32 years now.
Now we're going to move along.
So, no.
Lots of qualifications, lots of background. You know, and we'll give you a chance to talk about some of the things that are on your mind, but strengths of the system, there has to be some strengths that you see in Utica Community Schools. The strengths of Utica Community Schools. Do you see positives there?
Well, yeah, you know, they've always have some of the best educated kids in the state, actually in the state, students. And, and the top 14%, I believe they're in the top. They've done a great job with them. You know, they, they've all gone on to college, many of them. We have a very high rate of going on to college from Utica Community School. The teachers are doing a great job. The Superintendent we have, and she's doing a great job too. There are, you know, there are, there are some issues that we have to take...
Let's get a chance to talk about them. There, and you can weave this into this, if you have concerns about finances and some of those other things. The top two or three things that you think need to have some work done on them as we go forward, and maybe what you're hearing out in the, out in the community, and how you propose to fix that.
All right, the top three, I, we all talk about Common Core. I oppose Common Core. And I believe that that is, the education and the curricula for the, for the students should be determined by the states and by the local. Not somebody like Bill Gates or, or the N.E.A. who has made up the program for Common Core. I believe it belongs here. We can decide best what is for our children and not the Common Core.
Okay.
One of the reasons that the governors have decided that to initiate the program or get it started, Common Core, is that Obama has told the governors that, "We'll give you money if you start the program." Well, then all, of course, the governors say, "Oh, I'm going to get money, but we're going to do it." That's kind of an incentive for them to do it. But more and more governors now are finding out what the program is all about, and they have decided not to initiate the Common Core.
So you oppose the Common Core.
Right.
What else?
All right, the...
Not that you have to be opposed to it, but...
Yeah, I do oppose.
What is it where you would like to, what is it like you to see improved?
The non-Homestead tax, which has to be renewed. I do support that.
And so did the chamber.
Yes, it has $27 million for the school. Without that, they're going to be in deep trouble. It pays, it goes into the general fund. It pays for everything. And without that, it's not a new tax. It's only a renewal. Every 10 years it has to be renewed. And I understand, of course, you would support it too, but we do have to have that, renew that tax, and I want everybody to understand that. I have talked to Democrats. I have talked to Republicans, and they all agree that is something...
You know, and the whole election cycle a little bit with some millages and Board of Education has changed a bit now that it's in with the November election cycle. So that alone is going to change some things, I think.
Yes, yeah, well...
Participation, for one thing.
Well, you know, well, first of all, it's going to cut down on the cost of elections for the schools because it's all going to be at the same time. Where in the past, they always had them separate. We had to pay for the cost of it. But now it's, it's going to be with everybody else, with all the other elections. But the, there's going to be more voters at this time, too. It's, it's going to give us a better percentage of the voters who are going to be voting for the new board.
Sure.
Now, we have six people who are running for the two slots, and that's a six-year term.
So we've got Common Core, we've got the renewal of the millage. What else? Or non-Homestead millage, I should say.
Yeah, the non-Homestead. People have to understand that the non-Homestead, it doesn't affect personal property at all. It's business, commercial, that type of thing. It's going to affect those.
It does impact them.
Right, so let's, I obviously say that's...
But many in the community certainly support it anyway for all the right reasons.
Right, they're, we're going to have to bite the bullet this time around because there's no surplus. The revenues are spending...
Negotiations? Is that what you mean about biting the bullet?
Yes, yes. When the contracts come up, we're going to have to have some real negotiation. Somebody's going to have to give in. There's just not enough revenues coming in to pay for the spending. And it just, even though they let, let's say if they let the, the maintenance or the janitors go. All right, so they still had to hire outside contractors. So it's not like, you know, instead of being wages on this side, it's going to be on this side of the statement sheet. It's now, now, it's, and so you're really not saving a whole lot of money because you have to hire in contractors. So it's just a slight savings. So there's going to be, have to some negotiations. And you have to give and take a little bit on that thing.
So what do you see as the role of the Board of Education in the whole scheme of things?
Well, the Board of Education, naturally, of course, we have to make sure that you have a balanced budget. That's one of the things. But there are subcommittees that we have to belong to. Look at this information that comes through the subcommittee, then it goes on to the full board. And so this is one of the things, and of course, there's human resources, there's contractors. By the way, one more, I'd like to talk about the contractors. All right, right now, I think it's kind of closed to certain contractors that can come in and bid. I believe whether it's union or non-union should be able to compete on the contracts. Now, that is if they're qualified.
Sure.
And it certainly has to go through the same qualifications as union contractors. I have worked with some of the contractors myself many years back in my own job I had. I've worked with, one of them was Johnny Green. I don't know if you've heard Johnny Green. Power, process, piping. These are some of the people I have worked with in the past. And we just, these are those little three, the contractors and, and the Common Core and the Homestead. These are the three things that I think is an issue for myself. But the, we have to, we have to sit down and we have to have a balanced budget that's up to us. And have to make some hard choices and do that. I think right now, I've seen some people on the board who are supported by lobbyists or unions, all right, and they're afraid to make those choices. I don't, I have not seek the support of unions, lobbyists, any of them. I go on there, I have a clear conscience, and I'm going to vote for the people, and that's it.
You sound like you just did a great close, but you have a couple of minutes.
Oh, okay.
And if you'd like to, if there's anything we didn't get to talk about, you need to do it a little quickly, and tell people why they should vote for you, and you should look at that camera right up there over my shoulder. This one, right over here.
Right here, okay.
Yes, sir.
Um, I, my background, my occupation, my background. I'm a former operations manager of a company. I'm a former corporate purchasing manager and also Director of Sales. My background is business management. My background is not, it's not a knock against education. I, I don't, I feel the teacher should not be in the board. This is, a teacher should be teaching, and you have to have people who have a certain occupation to be on the board to make those decisions and what they can do. There, like I said, there's hard choices, but I've, I've been operations manager, purchasing manager, Director of Sales. I've had my own company at one time for 13 years. So I know what it's like when you have only a certain amount of revenue coming in. You can only do a certain amount. You can't spend more than what you have. And that is, that is my background, that's sort of my occupation. Education, I attended Lawrence Tech University years ago. I was taking up architectural drawing. After a while, I decided that that was not my thing.
That's a different deal than what you ended up doing.
Yes, and so I switched over. I switched over to business administration. I attended Detroit Institute of Technology at that time. And then Uncle Sam sent me my draft notice. I had to go into the Army. I took medical training in the Army when I came back out. Then I attended Macomb Community. And while I was attending that, I met my wife. We got married. Children came, and I never did finish my college.
Tell them to vote for you.
I'm sorry?
Tell these folks to vote for you.
And I would like your vote.
Ron Elbers, candidate for Utica Community Schools. Ron, thank you very much for your time, and thank you for your volunteerism, for wanting to run, and I wish you success. Carolyn, good to meet you. Nice to meet you.
It's great to meet you, too.
Thank you for being here. And this is just an opportunity for folks to get to know you a little bit better and, and how things work in your world. And so if you'd tell us a little bit about yourself, where you live, and what kind of maybe motivated you to do this job, and a little background.
First, I'd like to thank the chamber for this opportunity because I think it's important for voters to meet the candidates they're actually going to be voting for.
Good, thank you for being here.
And thank, you're welcome. We actually, I'm, I'm currently a resident in Shelby Township, and we've lived here now for almost two decades. My husband and I, we have two sons. And when we were looking for a community to move to and be grounded in, be able to volunteer, have our sons raised in a community that not only has exceptional school system, but also community services, we moved to Macomb County. And since that time, we've been very active within volunteerism and trying to raise the community to what we feel it should be for our sons. Both of us have been in public service. And I currently am the Executive Director of a nonprofit organization that we founded in 2002.
You told me the name of it.
Our organization is called Lean on Us. And it's a nonprofit that actually is a resource for first responders in properly serving individuals with disabilities. So we've been lucky enough to work in a variety of venues through that nonprofit. The majority of the people that work with us and alongside us are also first responders that have a loved one with a disability.
Okay.
So our trainers are all living that and doing both the work and community piece as well as the parental piece, or they have a loved one, a parent, or a sister or brother.
And those, those life experiences and some of the credentials you just mentioned, the things that you do, help to prepare you for this job, if you will?
If elected, I do believe that they have, especially the things that we've done as residents within Shelby Township. We came to Utica Community Schools for our sons. They, they attended Epler. They attended Wiley as elementary school, then onto Epler, then onto Utica High School.
Very good.
Both graduated with, on the honor roll and had gone on to college. Our sons are two different ends of the spectrum on learning styles. So we had to raise them in a, in a different way. And it was, it's very unique, the way that we did so to meet their educational needs. That's why, that's one of the reasons, too, that I love Utica's logos, sort of say that every child learns because both of them were not only challenging to raise as, as two boys, but also to meet their educational needs.
You know, this is the, the next kind of question that we were going to segue into a little bit, the role of public education and as it applies to Utica Community Schools particularly. And you've already just shared some of that.
Well, that's the reason, one of the reasons we moved here, like I said. And when we first moved here two decades ago, it seems like time has flown. Utica was one of the brightest and stars in the school system within the state, and it still is.
And they've even grown since then.
And it has. You know, now we have almost 30,000 students, and our sons excelled within their programs. And as I said, it was a challenge. Our one son, our youngest son, Nicholas, has autism. And so to meet his needs, we all butted heads a little bit with the, with the district. And, but we also collaborated to bring resources to the district to meet not only his different learning style, but those of other children like him. We've also worked with at-risk students. And my husband, Andrew, actually was the school liaison officer for Utica Community Schools for, for several years. And we met many families that were struggling with their children who may have been at risk. And I helped to advocate for a lot of those children to stay in school. One of the things that I've always felt and always told parents is that your child's education will one day be their best asset. And I think that this district is one of the ones that people come to for that because it's something that your children will live in with the rest of their lives.
Good. You've been around, certainly with the district, and you've, you know, and maybe more than most. But the top two or three things that, should you be elected, that you'd like to accomplish with others, of course, because it probably takes teamwork and doesn't probably, it does. But, but top two or three things, when you're out talking to people, is that important to them for the schools? And maybe what we're doing good, or what we'd like to do a little bit better? And how would you hope to, to accomplish those things?
Currently, what I do in within my work is broach children overall as, as individuals who need not only to attain academic prowess, but also emotional and a social. And to ensure that all those things are met for children within our schools and students. That was something that I've always collaborated on within things. Currently, we're seeing things like bullying happening in schools. We're seeing things like hate crimes that are negative. And we really need to make our schools be places where students feel safe and want to go to school every day. I remember when I was a kid, I just loved going to school and being in school. And didn't even want to go home at times. So I do think that we're working with the state project and the national project on no bullying. And also with, my husband and I are presenting at the Michigan Alliance for Hate Crimes Conference in November on this topic regarding student safety. And I also feel that we are lucky in Utica Community Schools to not be in deficit like many other school districts are in this state. For many years, we've balanced the budget here, but we also have faced $50 million in cuts in the last four years. I do think this millage will assist, and we're supportive of that.
Should it be renewed?
If it does pass, but I do also think...
And I presume you're in favor of that passing?
You know what, I am.
Or am I putting words in your mouth?
No, I am, because I do think that as a community, that our business leaders are part of that. And I do think, too, when I've talked to people that I know, that we know...
As the Chamber of Commerce guy, I would tell you that we certainly represent many in that community, and they are supportive of it.
And you do. You have 16,000, 1,600 members. And one of the things that I discuss with members or business owners that are kind of undecided on this, I tell them that, you know, one of the things I tell parents is always, support your local businesses. Our small businesses are really our asset in communities. They're the, the foundation and what we can build on.
We believe that, too, of course.
So I, and that...
But we also believe in supporting the community.
I do, and I do think that even our students can do that within their commerce as consumers. So it's a thing that we can work and collaborate together. I don't want, I wouldn't want it to be something that people look at as a hardship for businesses because of our economic times. But I do think this is a lesson that we can learn and collaborate together to show our students that, to be more appreciative of what you do within the chamber.
Sure, and everybody stresses, of course, that it's a renewal and not an increase or anything like that, which we think is important to get, get out, actually.
It is, it is. And I do, and we, as I said, us as a family are actually supportive of it and will be educating more, going out and not going indoors and educating people on that.
Any other goals that you have, or any other areas that you see could use a little special love, attention?
Well, as I said, I think that our school, I think we're very lucky. I think Utica's is doing an excellent job for its students. One of the things, though, that I would like to, to increase more is support of at-risk students and diverse students. We have a population, a large, an increasing population of students that have English as a second language. And within literacy acquisition, we really need to look at that and what, how to support those students.
How can we best do that?
We could do that by, through what we're already doing, through technology, but also realizing cultural differences and working and collaborating together to talk to parents. One of the things that, when I've been out and talking to parents that they've had concerns about is being able to talk more, become more involved. I met with Dr. Johns a couple of weeks ago, and we had a two-hour discussion, almost, about the things that I had hoped to possibly be able to accomplish if I was elected to the board. And I, and we discussed that the population of students is ever-growing.
You know, and there's a widely diverse, the, the languages, and I don't know what the number is. She, you know, she quotes it pretty easily, and you, and I'm not putting you at a spot, but there are just more than one could ever imagine.
There is.
When you talk about English as a second language and those kinds of things.
There is, and it, and, but the thing about it, too, is that culture difference brings a richness to our community. And I think we need to not only support those students, but embrace them for bringing that to us. Because I, I've, we've always been, our family tries, always traveled a lot and learned a lot from different cultures and diversity and ethnicity. And that's always going to be changing.
And this nice tan that you're sporting is a result of a most recent vacation you just had.
Yes. Yes, we were lucky enough, we saved up for many years, and we took our sons to Hawaii for a vacation. And which, as I said, I think we saved up for three years for that, and it was too short.
Well, good for you.
But that's one of the things, too, I wanted to stress. For me as a person and the reason that I'm seeking this position is that our sons are now, they're both in college now, and actually, all four of us are in college. My husband and I are going back for our masters to do this.
Good for you.
And we're seeking to become more involved. And that, right now is why I'm running for this position. I want to, if elected, I'll take those next six years, and I have time now to devote to that.
It's originally long-term.
It is, in a sense. But I think it actually is an opportunity.
It really is.
To give the people elected to actually...
It really is. You can get something done.
To work and collaborate and make a difference. I can't imagine it being only a couple of years.
You know, and this almost goes without saying because of your answers already, but the role of the board is education and all of this stuff that's going on. Second-largest district in the state, almost 30,000 members, students, as you mentioned, and the board has an important role?
I do think it has an important role because we're not only there as a conduit between the community, between the people that serve in Utica Community Schools as employees, administration, but also the parents and the students. I'd love to see student, more student involvement in ways as an advisory to the board and also involve parents more and have an open-door policy of communication to meet students' needs and our community needs. Because our schools really are a foundational basis for our communities. Within our local governments, schools, I think, are the ones that actually bring people to our communities to live. They seek out good school districts like we did.
Certainly one of the main things that we hear, that and recreation opportunities. You know, Carolyn, we have just a couple of minutes left, and we certainly didn't get a chance to touch on everything, but if there's anything special that we might have missed that you'd like people to know, and then maybe take an opportunity and tell people why they should vote for you?
I think that, I would, first of all, I'd like to encourage everyone to go out and vote, period.
Very good.
I'm an adamant person about being involved because we are actually selecting the people that can make a difference in not only our government, our local government offices, a state, but state and federal. But something like the school board position, I think a lot of people don't really think about it. But it actually is a very important position within our community.
It's one of a whole bunch of things that are going to be on this upcoming ballot that's not typically there.
That's correct. So one of the first, it's the first time, I think, we've ever had the school board election run at the same time. And I think that that's why it's very important for voters to meet their candidates and know them. Know what they've done in the past, their history of community commitment, and also, too, their experience within providing collaboration towards solutions.
Good. So people should vote for you?
I think so. And my husband and my two boys, they better think so, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Carolyn, good to meet you. Thank you very much. I wish you success in the November election, and thanks for all you're already doing.
Thank you.
We're here with Danielle Nasowski, a candidate, incumbent candidate for Utica Community Schools. Welcome, Danielle.
Hi, thank you very much.
Nice to meet you. Our first time, and thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
We'll get started, and tell us about yourself. This is easy stuff. Where you live, what motivated you to run for a seat on the board?
Sure, I live in Shelby Township. I have three young children, three boys, Stefan, Dimitri, and Christian, who are, and Ted Morgan Elementary and Roberts Elementary. My oldest son, Stefan, is in sixth grade, and he's in the core program. We entered the district five years ago, about five years ago. For specific, we moved to Shelby Township specifically for Utica Community Schools as a destination district for, for my family. It's been such a wonderful experience. From, from day one, I began, you know, serving, serving the district and serving this community. It started in, in the classroom and with the PTOs, and it went all the way to the county level with the Macomb Intermediate School District, serving as the parent advisory committee, representative for Utica. So this was, moving to the Board of Education was a natural step for me to be able to serve just on a larger level.
A big one. You have skin in the game, for sure, with three kids in school, right?
Definitely, absolutely.
And you're enjoying it?
I love it.
Wonderful.
I do.
You know, and you've touched on this a little bit about some of your volunteerism, but the professional or volunteer experience that you have that will, that helps you to do this job and will help you to do it going forward if you win reelection or win election, if you will?
Sure. I volunteered on so many levels within the district and within the community, like I said. I also, I'm also the founder and president of a nonprofit organization in the community. It's called Stefan's Hope, and this has really given me, this has really helped me use my business background and organizational, more specifically organizational business background to, and being Chair, Chairman of the Board for Stefan's Hope. So working together with the... So working together with the-
Five oh one C three?
Correct, yep, it's five oh one C three. So, and putting that together and working, working with a nonprofit organization along with my educational background in business and all of the serving that I've done in the district volunteering.
Do you have a business background?
I do, yeah.
You do?
I have a bachelor's in management information systems-
Great.
-from Oakland University.
Good. And Stefan's Hope, tell us just a little bit about that. What do, what is, what's the goal?
It's a nonprofit organization that provides resources and services to children and families with autism. So we've given away thousands of dollars in scholarships to children or to families. We have sent children to camps. We have a Halloween party coming up soon as a gives-back type of thing. We have held Handwriting Without Tears courses, some support groups. It's really a wonderful organization.
How long has it been around?
It has been around for more than a few years, about four years.
Okay, good, good.
Yep.
That wasn't a trick question?
No, I know, I was just thinking back.
You know, this is, this is a low-meteor one. What is, and this is a good one, really, but you could probably talk about it a long time. Well, what do you see as the role for public education today?
I see the role of public education as helping to raise our future leaders and preparing all of our children for success, whether it be preparing them for a future in the military or preparing them for a future in, as attorneys, or a future in a public office themselves, or preparing them for a future in some type of trade. I believe that, that our job as being any part of public education is to prepare our children for success.
Can't argue with that. We've already mentioned some of this too, but this kind of, just all kind of rolls together. It's not any, this is, like I told you, it's not sixty minutes.
Sure.
But the strengths of Utica Community Schools. You said you came here specifically to bring your family here.
You know, Utica Community Schools is such a supportive community, and I really feel that the, the strengths of community schools, the largest strength to me are the people who come together to educate our students. That is-
Okay. Teachers, administrators, those kind of people?
Everyone, everyone and anyone who comes together.
Family.
Absolutely, yes.
In the classroom.
The entire district comes together daily, right, on a daily basis to educate our, our students.
Great. Three things, if you could, if you could have your wish and, and you're, you know, you're running for this office that, that you wish to continue, top three things you'd like to accomplish over the next several years, and it is several years, and how you'd like to accomplish them if you're elected?
Top three things? I would want to continue to preserve the academic excellence of Utica Community Schools.
Good.
I would want to continue to ensure that we have safe, wonderful communities. I would also like to ensure that there's success for all students.
And you would do that by hard work, dedication?
By, by serving the district in any way possible.
Very good. What is, what do you see as the role of the Board of Education?
The role of the Board of Education?
Some of the things you've just mentioned, of course.
Right, right. You know, the, the Board of Education plays a huge part in ensuring that all of our students are successful and in preserving the academic excellence of the district. All of these things that I, I have said that I want to work towards, the Board of Education plays a part in, in all of those, in many different ways.
Good. Is there, is there anything that you'd like to say that I haven't asked you? Is there, is there anything else that we should maybe touch on? You have, you're gonna get a tense to say foreclose, but if there's anything that maybe I didn't touch on that, you talked about your educational background, so we don't need to, right? Or you can talk about that a little bit more, if you like? Or you can, you can roll that all in and tell us, you have a couple of minutes, if you like, and why people should vote for you, and maybe just reiterate your strong points.
Yeah, and I think an important thing to know about me is that I have three, three young children in the district with, that have very different needs, right? I have my, my oldest son received special education services in the district through, through the core program. And I also have two, two other, two other great little boys who are very different also. So I think that's important to know about me, is when I talk about success for all, you know, I, I treat every child in the district, and every child in general, as if they were my own. So that, that to me is who I would want serving on the Board of Education for my-
And you enjoy working with the Board and with the administration?
It's been wonderful.
And all those folks?
It's been, it's been an absolutely wonderful experience, yes.
Great. Danielle Nisofsky?
Yes.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
I wish you much success-
Thank you, thank you.
-in the election.
Thank you.
And thank you for your service. Today with us is Jennifer Prebus, a candidate and an incumbent candidate, actually, which she'll probably share with us. But Jennifer, welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much for having me.
We're honored to have you. And tell us a little bit about yourself and where you live and-
Sure.
...the background.
As you mentioned, I am the, I am an incumbent, been serving the School Board since 2005. I reside between nineteen and M-59 in Ryan into Quinder, the north part of, south of M-59.
Yep.
Been living in Macomb County all forty-four years of my life. I've lived in Sterling Heights for all twenty. Graduated from Warren Fitzgerald High School and have a bachelor's and a master's, both from Central Michigan University.
Four chips?
Yes, fire-up chips. I'll be married twenty years at the end of this month, and I have two children that have gone through Utica Community Schools, one of which is still a junior.
Wonderful. So that, how long you've lived in the district would be my next question. I think you just answered that.
Yes.
Great. You have children attending and who have attended. You said that. What have they gone on to do or what are they doing?
Our son, Steven, that graduated last year, is currently going to Macomb Community College, looking at the potentiality of transferring up to Central this January. And our daughter, Morgan, is a junior at Stevenson. She's also involved in the Early College of Macomb program. So she goes to high school half-day, and then she goes to college half-a-day, along with being a part of their cheerleading program and working, so she's busy.
Yes, they are, busy families. Tell us about your professional or volunteer experience that best qualify you for continuing?
My professional and volunteer experience that best qualifies me for continuing is, I mentioned my master's degree, I have a master's degree in international business.
Great.
I've done different types of negotiation and business analysis for global companies. I've also done it within confines of, of other areas of the companies. I've been to Brazil to negotiate, France, Spain. I think one of the things that's a credit to be able to bring to it, along with the, with the Board experience, is there's almost three hats. So there's the hat that, first and foremost, I'm a parent in the district. And I'm emotionally invested in the success of our kids and emotionally invested in the success of our district as a whole. And what we're gonna do to bring forward from a globalization process, the ability for our kids to compete in a global society. The second bucket is the businesswoman, where I've indicated I have business experience. By trade, I am a commodity specialist with Chrysler LLC in their purchasing department, currently within Fuel Systems Purchasing. So kind of the financial things that come in from the Board. I'm also on the Finance Committee for the Board of Education, but the dollars and cents and, and things that come into that, I have experience in running, and it's a really large magnitude. When you, when you take, think about the fact that it takes almost a million dollars a day to run the school district.
It's amazing, isn't it?
It's a big checkbook. And then the third, so we've got the parent, we've got the businessperson, and then the third parent, or the third hat is basically the board member, which is, it's a role I take very seriously. I'm one of seven people that have been appointed by the community to make the right decisions and the decisions of what's gonna move the district forward, not only for this year's kids, but for the kids that are going to start ten, fifteen, twenty years from now, and make sure that they have that same quality background in education.
This one just kind of rolls right into this, and you've, you've touched on it a little bit, but the role of public education today, it's huge, I know, and you could fill a program with that, but talk us a little bit about your thoughts on it.
Well, like you said, the role of public education today is huge. It's a fabulous opportunity. It is something that everyone should have the ability and the initiative to take advantage of, because there's so many different opportunities, and there's so many different potential paths and offerings. You can go through our public school system today, and there's a myriad of opportunities of where you could go for your future, whether that is a college path, whether that is a career path, whether, whether that's another investigative study path, and you have the ability to, to move forward and compete globally.
Invocational, technical, right?
Yes.
It's awesome.
Yep.
I'm sure you're aware of many, but some of the, what are the major strengths of Utica Community Schools?
The major strengths of Utica Community Schools are definitely the foundation of it, which is its people. We have great educators, we have great administrators, we have people, there, there are some buildings, there's a lot of buildings that are like this, but specifically what comes to mind is there are certain buildings that you can walk in in Utica Community Schools, and you just walk in and you feel like you're home, and you feel like it's family. And, and you know that if you had a child, a young child that was upset and sitting down and maybe wasn't having the best day, that no one would need to know who this child is, but because of the sense of family, they would go over and see that, you know, can I help you?
Sure.
It's just, it's just the family foundation that moves us forward. I think that's very strong. I think the fact that we are known for our high graduation rate, which is fourteen percent, or above everyone else, or fourteen points above anyone else in the state, the fact that we're known for our twenty-seven advanced placement programs, the fact that we're recognized on a national level for our, all four of our high schools. It comes from the foundation of having the great people, but then there's the great offerings and the great opportunities that exist as well.
Great. What, what three things would you like to accomplish if reelected, and how would you propose to do that?
The three things that I would like to accomplish if reelected would be to continue to perpetuate our technological advances forward. We're being recognized nationally for our technology programs, and we're bringing forward innovative programs that are allowing our children at a very, very young age to become technologically savvy, because the world is growing smaller every day. So they're getting that opportunity to compete local, or to compete globally. The second thing that I would like to do is to continue the formative partnership that we've developed with our professionals and with our educators, and make sure that we keep moving in a positive cohesive direction, because I think at the end of the day, what you need is a good foundation to move forward and bring about any type of accomplishment. Everybody needs to work together, kind of get in the boat and all row in the same direction. And then the third opportunity, or the third initiative I'd like to bring forward is to increase the amount of community awareness when it comes to the school budget and the way that budgeting is done and the way that our finances are done, because it sometimes, unless you're really involved in it, it can be somewhat confusing and somewhat mysterious.
Or intimidating.
Yes.
And it's available online, but it's still can be, it can be overwhelming to-
Yes, so definitely to increase the education of the community that I serve in general.
Great. The role of the Board of Education?
Mm-hmm.
What do you see it as? What it, how have you operated, and would you like to keep doing it that way and?
Okay.
Involvement?
I've, initially became involved in the Board of Education kind of almost as a call to serve, so to speak. Mr. Truman, who was on the Board at the time, had stepped down. My children at the time were in second and fourth grade, and with that, it opened up an opportunity, and with changing graduation requirements and things, and, and being a working parent, I figured it was a way to become a little bit more involved and become a little bit more knowledgeable about what my children were going to need to be able to succeed. So moving that forward and, and keeping that in line with, with what I'd like to have, you know, continuing on and, and moving forward with the Board and what I want to do with reelection, is to sit there and basically go through the process of making sure that I represent the community, which I think is our function. The function is, we're seven people that represent the needs and wants of the community. And to-
And actually, a lot of communities.
Yes.
And a lot of students.
A lot, twenty-eight thousand four hundred. So that's a big responsibility, and it has to be taken seriously. And you have to be able to have, kind of like I spoke before with three different hats, you have to be able to, okay, I'm gonna take off my parent hat for the graduating class of 2016, and I need to think about the kids that are gonna be graduating in 2026. And, and not personalize it, and not make it about you or about your family or about your own individual, specific dynamic or demographic. It's to make sure that you really do what's best for all of our students moving forward.
Worthwhile goals, for sure.
Yes.
We have a couple of minutes here that if you'd, if you'd like to, if there's anything else that I should have asked you and didn't that you'd like to talk about, or if you'd like to make a pitch of your own, which of course you need to do and we want you to do, but why people should vote to reelect you, and anything else that you may wish to speak about in that line, please do.
Okay, well, as far as why I'd like to be reelected, we kind of touched on that a little bit. I'm a parent in the district, I'm emotionally invested in the success of our children, I'm emotionally invested in the success of twenty-eight thousand four hundred students. I believe in working collaboratively with our administrators and our instructors and moving forward to have everyone be competitive on a global level and working for a global society and moving forward and to bring about that change. Additionally, I'd like to encourage everyone to support the non-homestead millage that Utica Community Schools is looking to renew. As I'm sure you've all heard from Dr. Johns, it's a big portion of our funding that does not affect anyone on a personal household tax level, and it goes into our budgetary process, and, and it's something that's needed to maintain the current programs that we have and make Utica Community Schools continue to be not only the second-largest district in the state of Michigan, but one of the best and one of the best that offerings are. So thank you for your consideration, I appreciate it.
Jennifer Prebus, thank you very much, and I wish you much continued success. And in the November fourth voting and the balloting, thank you for being here.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time. Thank you for having me.
Mary Thomas, welcome.
Welcome, thank you.
And candidate also for Utica Community School Board of Education. Tell us a little bit about you, where you live, and why you want to run, and a little bit of that stuff.
Okay, great. Well, my husband and I live in Shelby Township with our son, Jamie, who is a first grader at West Utica Elementary. And I was motivated to run for School Board, 'cause my background is in education as a school counselor, and I look at serving on the School Board as a way to give back to our community and to the schools who have been really good to us.
And counseling at the college level now, you told me, right?
Correct, yes. I'm a counselor at Oakland Community College in Royal Oak.
And you started at?
I started actually back in the day in Farmington Schools, then I was in Pontiac Schools, and then West Bloomfield Schools, and then landed at Oakland, and I've been there for four years.
Good. Now, how long have you lived in the district?
We've been in the district for two years.
Two years, okay. And you do have a child, this is the next question, do you have a child attending or having, has attended? You're not in the has in your case, but you have a child and you're-
I do.
-satisfied with the, you like the education and system?
Absolutely. My son's, like I said, a first grader at West Utica, loves, absolutely loves-
Soccer player, you said?
Soccer player, football player, basketball player, you know, wants to do a little bit of everything until he figures out what he wants to do in life, which is fine. And I have nephews who are at Duncan as well.
I learned as a grandparent that when you have five children, grandchildren, doing multiple sports, it becomes a whole different ballgame, so to speak.
It is, it is for the grandparents, so.
Professional or volunteer experience that qualify you for this and kind of give you the want-to and what might, what might bring to the level of experience and expertise?
Well, my son was a kindergartner at first, at, at West Utica Elementary. I would go into the classroom about once a month and volunteer, and I also volunteered for their Destination Imagination program in their team, so I'm familiar with what's the happenings in the elementary school. And as I've said before, my background is a school counselor, being in the public schools, understanding how public schools work and what our teachers, paras, our staff, and parents go through every day with, you know, making sure we get the best education for our students.
Very good. What is the role of public education today, do you see?
Yeah, the role of public education is to-
You could talk for an hour and a half.
Yeah, that's a loaded question. We could go so many different directions, but-
In your mind?
You know, it's, public education is to educate every student that we can to the You know, it's, public education is to educate every student that we can to the best of our ability, to meet their needs, meet their goals, and find what's the best fit for them. So there's no one right answer, because it's going to be different for every student. I look at, you know, the kids in my son's classroom, and it's a very diverse group. So it's meeting each, meeting the needs of each of our kids in their classroom.
Very good. What do you see as the particular strengths of Utica Community Schools? And there are many.
There are many. One of the biggest strengths is personnel. They're tremendous, there's not one person at West Utica that doesn't love my son. And I know that goes to every other kid in that building. You know, they hire great teachers, great paras, great secretaries, great administrators. Everybody in that district is, wants your kid to do well and is pulling for your kid to do well. The other thing is programs. We have tremendous programs and tremendous opportunities for students of all abilities and all levels, you know, to move forward in their educational pursuits.
Is this your first shot at a political-
It is.
-run?
It is.
A service run, if you will?
It is my first shot, hat in the ring for public office, and it's been a fun ride so far, and we got about a month, and it'll be another fun ride in the next month.
Wonderful. What are the top three things, if you're elected, Mary, that you would like to accomplish or see accomplished during your term, which is pretty extensive, they're pretty long-term, so you're in it for a while? So what would you like to see happen or change, and how would you plan to do that?
Yeah, and I, you know, that's a great question. The three things for me would be looking at how are we educating all of our students? So from our special education to our IB program, are we ensuring that all students have their needs met? The other thing is the evaluation, how we're evaluating student growth, and how we evaluate how our students learn. And the other thing, I would probably say, would maybe look at curriculum and how we're delivering our curriculum, and really take a poll or a feel for the community and see what their needs are and their wants are. Just because I have a want and a need or a desire doesn't mean everybody else does.
Yeah, and you have to work with another group of-
Absolutely.
-folks to accomplish things, right?
Absolutely.
It's important to be able to make that all work. What, in your view, what is the role of the Board of Education of Michigan's second-largest district?
You know, in my view, the role is really to hear the needs of the community, as well as support the tremendous number of staff we have within the district, and kind of